Running back to the other office to get something for me. There's a sign up list if anybody wants to speak to the board in the delegations to be heard section of the agenda. Is these have been properly posted on normal posting places?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there corrections or changes? If they're not, all favor say aye. Student showcase. Is she prepping them? Let's take care of some.
We can start moving forward. They were a little bit tardy. They're going to be here at 7:15.
Okay, all right. We'll go on to the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, October 21st and Tuesday, November 14th.
Second.
Okay, a motion made. Second, is there any additions, corrections? All favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, we have the bill listing.
Okay, the voucher listing for October 17 through November 20, 2017. General funds payroll checks numbers 553679 through 553679 for $46.17. Next check number 553680 for $46.17. Next is checks numbers 553681 through 553682 for $589.52. Next wire transfers or payroll liabilities. Wires numbers 2017-00147 through 2017-00181 for $288,529.18 for a total payroll of $701,174.52. Next accounts payable. Checks numbers 52567 through 52644 for $277,517.58. Next AP wire transfers 2017-00173 through 2017-00187 for $9,872.50. Next credit card transactions 0920 for $29,504.90. Next numbers 171800079 for $1,609.85. Next 171800084 for $9,189.22. Next number 171800096 for $4,755. Next the ECH direct deposit numbers 171800080 through 171800095 for $1,738.48. For a total accounts payable of $334,186.72 for a total dispersments of $1,035,361.24.
One second. Okay, a motion and a second. The hard copy that I have is not the same numbers. Is there significance to that?
Sure.
I'm not sure what type of guy I'm sorry, but Chris Redd is correct. That's what I have too.
Okay. Their total is the same.
Okay.
But the breakdown is different.
The breakdown is different?
Okay.
I'll take a look at that after the meeting.
Okay. Any other questions? On the transportation. Sorry, I didn't get a chance to call you. For as special as that, for one month, that $5,000?
Transportation for Dacman?
Yeah.
And how much was it?
I think it's $5,800.
$5,800. And there's different categories that they'll break down into.
It wasn't, it wasn't percolate, it wasn't regular. It was special needs.
Yes, special education. Yes, we do have some specific transportation for students.
So are we transporting two this year?
One.
No, one student.
Just, just one individual?
And we're not sharing from there.
No. Nope. Okay. No. We also are, we also do transport other students in the district through our special education program. But there is one, we do have a bill that is for auto district.
If that, is there any way we can figure out that per day?
Correct. We can speak after. We'll speak after the board meeting.
Okay. Okay. That's the only question I have. And all favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion's carried. Okay, got that done. Okay, we're on to delegations to be heard. And no one has chosen to speak. We are moving on to administrators' report. There's no donations, so personnel actions.
Sure. Would like to bring to the board two hires. Would like to bring Mitchell Barris replacing Melnick as a custodian. Mitchell is one of our former student, student here at Merton and is kind of considered seasonal and joins our nighttime workforce in the custodial department. Mrs. Kristen Palmquist is going to be replacing, recommended to replace Mr. Ferguson as our primary school lunch custodian. So first, personnel action, just looking to, for a motion to approve the letters of appointment for Kristen Palmquist and Mitchell Barris as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the letters of appointment for Kristen Palmquist and Mitchell Barris as presented.
One second. Motion and second. Questions? All favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion's carried. We've got the.
Red letter for leave? Correct, yep. We do have Kaylee Budzine who is in her first year teaching with us as first grade teacher is expecting, their family is expecting their first child coming here in January. The reason for this request is, is per FMLA guidelines, she does not necessarily qualify for formal FMLA. So in order for us to approve anything beyond her ten sick days and things like that, I needed to break this request in front of the board for 12 weeks unpaid leave for the maternity leave. So you obviously have the letter from Mrs. Budzine in front of you, but the administration is, would recommend this unpaid leave of absence. So we are just looking for a motion to approve the unpaid leave request for Kaylee Budzine as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the unpaid leave request from Kaylee Budzine as presented.
Second. A motion and a second. Questions? All favor then say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion's carried. District report cards under the information?
Sure, yeah. With very excited, last week Tuesday, the school and district report cards came out for the entire state of Wisconsin. And what you have in front of you, and I did share this with the entire parent community as well, is our report card in our grade. You can see that Merton Primary School received a 94 percent, which is very close to what they received last year, right around 96. Merton Intermediate School received an 88.2 grade this year. That is up about 10 percent from a year ago. And that basically correlates directly to the intermediate schools increasing their forward scores and then there's obviously a lot of other components that go into that report card as well. But, and as a district, overall district, we rose from about 84 percent to 92 percent. So that 92 percent has placed us in, basically we're, you have course rank, all the school districts in the state of Wisconsin, that places us fifth out of 422. So congratulations to our staff, our parents and our community for a wonderful 2016-17 report card. So it's just one indicator, it's a very public indicator that obviously realtors use it and obviously for a lot of recruiting and recruitment purposes too as well, whether it be for students and families as well as staff, if we need to go off recruiting the staff too. So very fortunate to live in the community which we do. You will find all of the Arrowhead feeder schools, basically all over 90 percent, they're all, I do believe, in the top 10 in the state. So we are blessed to live and work in the community that we do. So just wanted to share that with the board. And we did share that with our community last week too, so.
Ron, no doubt, very pleased with the results and the improvement over last year. I've also been reading some stuff about that there were a lot of schools that improved significantly over last year and there's some questions about some of those improvements. Do you have any insight into that or?
I'm not surprised that ours improved. I don't know about what everybody else is because I have talked to a few administrators and they're not sure why I'm like now for their side of it. But across the state, I kind of just looked at, looked at ours, it was a 92 when they recalibrated and they did through some inquiry and things like that. Ours went up by a point two. But I'm not surprised that our increased, especially when you take a look at our language arts increase, we increased 14 percent. And then we also did some closing the gap as well between some of our subgroups as listed. But I really, I'd have to do a little bit more research to tell you anything more about that. But we did close the gap between us and the top feeder school, if that makes any sense and if that matters to anybody. But that's what we look, we look for, our competition is the feeder schools. That's where we kind of rate, force rank ourselves there.
Yeah, there was, I think there were about 94 percent of the schools statewide actually qualified as meeting expectations or better, which was also kind of viewed as being skewed a little too behind.
The, the meeting expectations though is 63 percent.
Oh, yeah. It's well lower than that.
It's 63, we would mean the significantly exceeding expectation. But I, I really can't speak to the breakdown of, you know, either the forced rank and/or their percentage wise. But I know this is, this is really because of federal, the federal government is requiring a state report card for their, a lot of their title funds and things like that too, so. And ours went up and I'm, I can't speak to the percentage of schools compared to last year, that, that expectation for school districts. I have to take a look at that. Ours went up.
Okay, is that all the information?
That's all I have.
Okay, then we're on to the committee reports, the student achievement committee.
Sure, about earlier month in, in November, and actually we're meeting again come Wednesday to take a look at both digital literacy as well as mathematics. As for digital literacy, we continue to really break down the state standards in digital literacy and there's seven, several buckets, there's seven buckets to be exact, and then within each of those buckets, there are subheadings and things like that. So there also are teaching standards, when we take a look at the teaching of digital literacy. So we, last time we took a look at what is expected of our teachers and probably start to develop some of our professional development around some of those capacities. This Wednesday, actually, we got our next committee meeting and what we're going to be working on for the digital literacy standard side is really taking apart those, those standards, breaking into groups of kindergarten through second grade, third through fifth, and sixth through eighth, and really dissecting, pulling apart and identifying essential outcomes as well as where we are going to highlight these standards and either for which content area, because it's very different than math, it's actually going to be happening in mathematics. For digital literacy, it can happen across the gamut, all the way from arts to music to, you know, language arts, literacy, wherever it might be and wherever it fits appropriately. So we're going to continue to really dissect those standards and then assign each grade level those essential outcomes and move forward. For mathematics, the last time we met, we were taking a look at, we were being, I don't want to say entertained, but basically we had vendors come in, mathematical programs, kindergarten through fifth grade programs come in, and this upcoming Wednesday will continue that as well. Once we've taken a look at and considered all of the different possibilities that are out there, or the ones that we narrowed down to, then we'll begin to start to pilot. So you'll hear a little bit more about that in December, once we kind of get our head around a lot of that area too. We've got Martika Hazelwood as the charge of the mathematics side of things and your Benny as well as Mary Iwansky are in charge of the digital literacy side, so both of them are represented this evening.
How many mathematics curricula currently?
We got, we, right now, we have one curricula running currently. We're evaluating, I mean, six, six different, yep, six different kinds. Four of them are just K5, one of them is a K8 curriculum and the other one is a 68 curriculum. Can be adapted to from that. For the seventh and eighth grade, we are still, you know, when we take a look at it, it is an algebra for all type of mentality. And our current algebra text is serving the purpose of just really preparing kids for algebra two, when we take a look at our placement exams as well as what is expected from Arrowhead too. So that is also in the running for, just to kind of keep that program on going from a seventh and eighth grade standpoint only. So, but from a K6 side, we'll have something different for sure because our current everyday math program has been updated with a new version and that's the one we're really targeting as one of the possibilities, one of the four or five that we're looking at. So again, more to come, especially with the mathematics one in December.
Okay, we're on to principal meetings.
I decided to wait till you're not talking. That's back to the strike.
Okay, so I wanted to talk a little bit about math workshop that I've seen went on. It's nice that Coach Martika happens to be here because she's been working with all of our math teachers here at the intermediate school, fifth through eighth grade. They've gone through some station work. If you take a look in the middle there, that's Mrs. Cardino, one of our seventh, eighth grade math teachers. She actually is doing a mini lesson with a group of kids and what you can't see is there are two other groups that are working on other station work there. Some are doing some 10 mark stuff and some are doing some individual work. And then they rotate through and the nice thing is that when you use stations like this, you can set the instruction for the level of the kids that happen to be in the classroom. So, and then on the floor over here is, happens to be in Mrs. Jones's room and she'll be coming a little bit for a little math work there, but some different stations that they were doing there. And some of the cool stuff I've seen, I know that Mike has seen as well, is our teachers conferring with kids and it doesn't matter whether your language arts class or math class or social studies or science, they have a chance to sit down and really talk to the kids and make sure that they understand what's going on. So Coach Martika has just been a great addition to our, to our staff here and I know that she's moving over to the primary school to work with them. Apparently that's going to go over very well because of the class, which is great. Project Lead the Way is going really strong here. Our sixth graders have been using Inventor in the computer lab and I know that Mr. Spindler has come in a couple of times to help, wow, look at it get brighter, to help out with some of the Inventor stuff. In the upper right hand corner, if you take a look, the students are developing 3D models of things and there's a Chromebook in his lap because he's got a video that he's using to help him get through that process and then uses that in the desktop computers in our STEM lab there. The sixth graders also started to develop some therapy toys for individuals with multiple sclerosis to work on hand strength. So they're working in small groups, that's what that other picture happens to be. Last year, if you remember, Mary Iwansky came in and showed us our, the palette project that happened in the first, first quarter. So that was going on for our eighth graders again, where they take a palette and then create it into something else. So I put Coach Mary on there because Mrs. Iwansky's been doing a great job with our Project Lead the Way group. Fifth grade will be getting into that, I believe, in the second trimester. And then readers and writers workshop, same sort of thing. We have many lessons that go on in the classroom. And the upper right hand corner was in Mrs. Cashwood's class. In the midst of a mini lesson, there was a chance for the kids to turn and talk about the content that was being delivered in class. So here they are with their reading partners, sometimes they use clock partners, sometimes it's just luck of the draw as to who their partner happens to be. In that bottom picture, you can see some conferring going on in Mrs. Hess and Mrs. Frank Coors' class. What amazes me is watching the kids actually use the time that's given to them and the amount of time the teachers are able to spend one-on-one with our kids. And shout out to Coach Andrea Palmer who has been working really well with our fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade language arts teachers. And then I had a little Veterans Day celebration because my folks were here. My dad is a, is a Navy veteran from the Korean War era. I didn't take my, my camera out to take pictures, which is abnormal for me, as many of you know, but I stole some from Mrs. Cashwood's and tweeted some out, our National Junior Honor Society kids are completely and totally in charge of that. They run the entire program, except for me coming up onto stage once to say a couple of words. A great turnout, over 50 veterans showed up. And as I waited for our veterans to leave when it was seventh and eighth grade lunchtime, so imagine 200 kids coming to lunch and our veterans all leaving, all of them stopping to say how impressed they were with our kids in the classroom. And I'll send this out to you board members so that you can check out the animoto that Mrs. Jones makes. She always makes a great video representation of what the day was like.
So hands-on in science is one of the things that we have to size at the primary school. And there you can see kids working on erosion module. And here's where they have, they have to measure the water and watch its effect on the sand that's been all prepared in a tray ahead of time. And there you can see how the kids are seeing the difference between a Delta and an alluvial fan, which I learned about that. The alluvial fan somehow skipped me when I studied my weather and climate in college, but it kind of brought back memories. But if you want to see kids really get excited about observation and hypothesis and how things are going to work, come in and see a fall science lesson. Jay and I can show you these things, but stopping by and watching these kids in teams, making sure they're accurate, they're not goofing around, they're not playing with the water, they're really getting, learning about how this works and not just in textbooks. So it's always a good time to go in there and watch the fourth graders do that. We have a bulletin board right near the main drag, near art and music and cafeteria hallway where we're outside the library and we put up a, a display of student math work. And each time there's a math assessment, the teachers give me the math hole, the math assessment and I review the math. And maybe some of you have seen my little initials and smiley face or a star on the papers that I've looked at their work in. So what I'm doing this year is I'm hoping that this creates a sense of, I want to get my paper up on the bulletin board and there you can see a photo of fifth grade math that our fourth graders were working on right there. And of course, it starts early. It's a lot different than first graders with money and so everybody's gets up there, it's not just the high flyers. I hope, also I hope to get work up there of kids who have improved over time as well. Greg talked.
Yep.
Whoa.
Yeah.
I don't know where that came from.
I don't either. You've never called me Greg before.
We'll call you others. Jay talked about the many lessons and the follow-up from what the kids do afterwards. And here the children are working together. It was Halloween and the kids were still working on work that would put the learning into practice and working as pairs is one of the most effective ways they can do that. And of course, they have a helping hand there.
Yeah, I saw the help.
The helping hand there in the middle? Can you see it right there? Native Americans and pilgrims, the Five Peas always put together a feast and we have group parents come together and have a chance to study food groups and what it means to share and so forth. This year we cut back on the mashed potatoes. We had a few mashed potatoes left over last year and we went on with fruit and those kinds of things and the kids did a great job doing that. And our food drive was great again, over 3,000 items were brought in and we had a little celebration in our gym. Didn't want to end the presentation without a few grins and giggles. Darlene said between the two schools, Darlene Afferman who runs this, over 50 families were served this year. It was 35 last year, 50 this year, which is, which is really significant. So this is a chance for us together to get together and celebrate. And the guy on the right, I don't know. And of course, certain kids got picked to do this because they did a great job of bringing in food. One little boy who hit me pretty good brought in 300 items, which was pretty significant. But it's a great time to get everybody together in our school and celebrate as, as an entire community. So that's one of the big reasons we do this. So that's one, that's Amanda Bente getting it right there in the face. That's it. That's it. Any questions? If you ever want to stop by and check out things, how things are going out in action, just give us a call. We can do a lot in a half hour and show you lots of stuff as Jake can. There's nothing better. So next month I'm preparing for a presentation and watching the fourth graders working on how they organize text from nonfiction. And then watch those study skills kinds of things that we talk about that aren't measured, but watch kids work. Watching Mrs. Iwansky's class today was pretty amazing, so that's just a little hook for next month.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. So Mrs. Jones, we'll skip to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Why don't you go down in the front and say so, Agnes? And school board, my deepest apologies. I'm so embarrassed that I thought the meeting was at 7:30. Were they at 7:30 in the past? Please say yes.
Sure.
Okay. They used to be at 7:30, so I just had it in my brain that it was 7:30. So I do have a peace offering of candy, such kind of a tradition when I come to a board meeting. So when I call your name, please come forward. Mrs. Jankhart, Mr. Benny, Mr. Spindler. My apologies.
You know who you are.
Mr. Benny, Mrs. Jankhart. You guys get to get up and move during the meeting, that's kind of the rule. Oh, wait, no, Mr. Dobich was going to get one, Mr. Spindler.
Oh, no, you have to say.
Oh, it did. Now I can't even read or tell time. Awesome. Mrs. McGregor, she's here, right? Yes. Mr. Pfeiffer. My apologies. I mean, thanks. Mrs. McGregor. Absolutely. Let's hope I have some for everybody, right? Mrs. Wellness?
She became ill.
I was just going to say, I didn't see her.
She became ill.
Okay, I'm sorry to hear that. Mr. Russ?
There's lunch.
Mr. Buddhist, go and get Mr. Postick. Sorry, audience, you guys don't get in.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Postick and Mr. Buning. There you go. Thank you so much. Again, my apologies. So I have these fabulous nine kids up here with, I think I sent you an email and you got the problem ahead of time, that they so graciously gave up their evening and time tonight to share with you their math knowledge. So I would like to introduce them to you now. When I call your names, boys and girls, please just step forward and kind of wave, okay? Or whoa, kiss, or whatever you want to do. Here we go. Natalie Tyler. Let's give her a round of applause. Erica Gardner. Paulie Burkhart. Nathan James. Danielle Ayer. Trent Turner. Mason Lucky. And Elliot Buckbauer. Can I tell them the story? Elliot wanted to do it, but she was so hesitant because it's nervous, right? It's like, this is a big deal. And I said, I said Elliot, I said, here's your comfort zone, this circle right here and all the magic happens right here outside of your comfort zone. So give them all a round of applause for going outside. School board, since you are scattered, it's going to be kind of different tonight. I think they're going to like present something right here. There is a basket in here with all their names on it and you're going to pick a name and then that person is going to come and share with you their math poster and their math knowledge based on this problem that I gave you in the email. Okay? I have the problem here if you still need it. Any board members figure it out, like if any of you guys solve it? Okay, maybe I didn't give you enough time. Then the other thing is, board members, do you remember when I said that I could have, like you could give them another math problem? You guys didn't know this, but they might have another math problem up their sleeve because tonight is all about thinking about how you think about math, okay? And how you solve problems. So if you don't have another problem up your sleeve and you want to like give them another one, I have two choices here, a SpongeBob one, you guys have seen these before, right? Like this type, they haven't seen this one, obviously. Or I have a Halloween one that you could certainly put in front of them and have them show you how they do it. Okay? So we have nine kids, five board members. So Mr. Postick, Mr. Buddhist, Mr. Russ, I'm going to have you do this as well, that gets me what, eight? So I need one more. Mr. Benny, would you, would you mind? Okay, so you guys would come forward, the board members and the people that I called to pick a name, where do you guys want to meet with them? Do you want to meet with them at your table or scattered around?
Scattered around.
Okay, so Mr. Buddhist, who did you get? So Mr. Buening, who did you get?
Erica.
Erica. Colton?
Trent.
You got Mason?
Colton?
Yeah, buddy.
Oh, Mrs. Janckardt, oh, this is McGregor. I forgot Mrs. Bowden.
Well, you're bad, thank you. Great. Good, you did very good. Maybe still assist in linear equations. He doesn't even know.
There you go, right, right.
You have to take care of your own.
Thomas, Trent, do you want to stay here, honey? Stay here because there's, yeah, you want, fifth graders, you guys want to stay here. Trust me, you don't want to leave early. Don't leave early. Five, six, seven, eight, nine. Yes, they are all up here. School board, before you do your thing, I just have two people that I want to recognize. First of all, all the parents that brought their kids here tonight, I appreciate their time and efforts and energy. The other person I feel should recognize in the audience is Mrs. Martika Hazelwood. She's our new math coach this year and she's doing an awesome job. And she heard that the math kids were coming, she's like, I'm going to go to that meeting tonight. So she did not have to be here and she came on her own volition and we really appreciate her support. So Mrs. Hazelwood, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Thank you for the candy again.
It would be a board meeting without them.
Okay, I've got certificates to hand out. If you want to come up, Erica? Colton? Nathan? Danielle? Trent? Mason? Kelly? Elliot? Mrs. Jones?
We did get it. Everybody got it, right, guys? All right, let's head back to my one oh three, I want to say thank you, school board.
Thank you very much.
Mason? We are on to new business. We got the school calendar?
Sure. Last month, we presented a draft of the proposed student calendar for the eighteen-nineteen school year. Since the October board meeting, the Arrowhead Union High School School Board has approved their calendar. Basically, what was in question was the spring break. And Arrowhead has been part of a bigger conversation with Waukesha County, other Waukesha County schools who are considering moving towards a set spring break. And the consensus of the other districts in CSUP were the last weekend, or the last week of March. So what we have in front of you is a proposed calendar that represents basically a movement of spring break being attached to the Easter holiday to the last week in March. Given the calendar and the number of days that we were able to sneak in around the Easter holiday, we still do have the Friday and the Monday off. So if anyone is going to be traveling, they're able to do so without missing school if possible. So basically, we still have one hundred and seventy-seven days of school. The school calendar is almost, is basically identical to what it is this year, but with the addition of the sliding of spring break to a different time of the school year. So just looking for a motion to approve the twenty-eighteen-nineteen student calendar as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-eighteen-nineteen student calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All favoritists say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same side. Motion's carried. No other business?
That's it.
We're on to future meetings. We have the workshop on the fourth. We've got a closed session on the sixth for industry evaluation. And we talked about earlier that we'd get the evaluation templates out to the board members.
I can get those out, yeah.
And come prepared with yours filled out and we will discuss it and compile it. Okay, the eighteenth is a regular, regular board meeting. Open session's at seven o'clock. I'd like to meet in closed session just to go through those evaluations as a board after I've pulled together. How much time? Half an hour?
That's probably.
Right. Start at six-thirty, then we have a closed session. And January twenty-eighteen. We'll have some future dates for strategic planning.
Correct, yep, for strategic planning, we have, we have a due hold to the committee and they'll slowly begin to come in. So nothing before the first of the year, though.
Any agenda items that the board members would like to have in any of those meetings? Okay. Do a motion and a second. All favoritists say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same side. Meeting's adjourned.
Yeah, oh, no, we'll be, yeah, the primaries. The six will be the primaries.